I'll go ahead and call the Thursday, May 23rd, 2024 meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council to order. If you could please stand and join me, and I would like to ask Commander Frye to lead us in the flag.
Commander Marburg, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the universal law of corrigution, justice, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Next item, please.
Next item is roll call. Councilmember Lopez Taft.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Karpinski-Costa.
Present.
And Mayor Daniels.
Here. Next item, please.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, and the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. This meeting is closed caption and livestream at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replay is on Monday, May 27th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14, and this meeting can also be viewed on the city's YouTube channel.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next item is approval of agenda.
Move approval.
Second. It's been moved by Vice Mayor Karpinski-Costa and seconded by Councilmember Middleton. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Next item, please.
Next.
And is DeColle here?
DeColle?
DeColle.
Is DeColle here yet?
No, we're gonna go ahead and hold item four then for a bit and come back to it.
So we'll skip to presentation number five, proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming June 2nd through 8th, 2024 as National Garden Week.
Thank you. I've asked Vice Mayor Karpinski-Costa to present this proclamation.
And as a gardener, and as Ashvini is a gardener, we are happy to do this proclamation. So I want to invite representatives from the Kiwanis Club of Citrus Heights, the Mesa Verde Key Club, and the Sylvan Ranch Community Garden Group to the podium, please. Are they here? Oh, there they all are, wow.
Come on up.
It's gonna be a fun group picture.
This guy looks familiar. I don't know. Looks kinda familiar.
For a second there, I thought we were gonna have a flash mob.
We're in the mass. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read the part of the proclamation, and then you guys can take turns making comments about gardening. This is fun. This is fun for all of us, I'm sure. Anybody who grows tomatoes appreciates this. Whereas gardeners have a passion for, pardon me? Did I hear something?
No, no, go ahead.
Whereas gardeners have a passion for nurturing the beauty and resources of the earth through the planting of seeds, the care of all plants, and the riches of their efforts. And whereas gardeners seek to add beauty, splendor, fragrance, and nutrition to our lives through the growing of herbs, vegetables, foliage, and flowers. And whereas gardening furnishes a challenging and productive activity for our citizens, for those just learning, as well as those having years of experience. Whereas the Kiwanis Club of Citrus Heights, in collaboration with the Mesa Verde Key Club, work diligently to replace the aging school garden with a brand-new one that will offer students a valuable opportunity to engage in hands-on learning about horticulture and environmental stewardship. And whereas the Sylvan Ranch Community Garden has brought gardeners together since 2004, who are dedicated to teaching and cultivating through sustainable, organic-growing methods, and donate 1,000 pounds of fresh produce each year to a local food closet. Whereas gardening enables community members across the nation and the world to make a world of difference in the communities where they reside and work. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights does hereby recognize the week of June 2 through 8th, 2024, as National Garden Week, and further recognizes the Kiwanis Club of Citrus Heights, the Mesa Verde Key Club, and the Sylvan Ranch Community Garden for their commitment to the betterment of the community by creating thriving, sustainable gardens that will enrich the educational experience at Mesa Verde High School and benefit the entire local community.
All right, so I'm gonna let you guys speak a little bit, and then we'll come down and get a picture. Maybe we'll stay up here since there's so many, but if there's somebody from each organization that wants to speak.
This looks like Kiwanis. This looks like the Kiwanis Club.
He does look familiar, yes.
Hello, everyone. City Council, thank you so much. Dr. Karpinski-Costa's words were exactly on point with what we were hoping for with the garden in Mesa Verde. I do have to say that we owe a huge amount of gratitude and thanks to our, to the Sir Optimist Club for their time and their donations at a really critical point in that project. They, they were fundamental in making that happen, and having our students work with us on a daily basis, three to four times a week in that garden for up to 45 minutes to an hour, has truly enriched our lives and enriched the entire campus, and we're extremely grateful for that.
Thank you, and can you introduce yourself?
I'm sorry. I'm Benjamin Middleton. I am the Key Club Advisor from Kiwanis for Mesa Verde. This is my first year in that role, so it's been really gratifying.
Very nice. Thank you. Anybody else?
From Kiwanis? Or?
Where's our community garden people?
Come on up.
My name is Debbie Levon, and I'm with Sylvan Ranch Community Garden, and we have 72 beds, and they're all full this year. Also, we worked with Mary Poole this year, and we made arrangements to have Republic Services to bring in the compost that we get from our green waste bins, and that has been going very fast. So we've, it's been opened up to all of the Citrus Heights residents, so they can come up, they just bring a tote and a shovel, and it's been, we can't get that guy out here fast enough for the next load. So that's been, you know, working out very, very well. So, let's see, what else do we have?
Compost workshop.
Yes, thank you. Tomorrow, oh, so the other thing is, is outside of having the collaboration between the city and Republic Services, Republic Services will be there on Saturday, they have 42 people coming to the compost workshop that they, they hold it about three times a year. And then we also have Citrus Heights Water District that also has a demonstration area in the corner, in the front corner by the flags and the signs, so that's been working out really well as well, so.
And you do an annual vegetable sale, don't you? Have a?
Yes, and every April we have a plant sale, and that's also opened up. I mean, us as gardeners, we have to buy, you know, we have to pay for ours as well, so we just grow it in our greenhouse, but we also open it up to the public. So that has been really well. That's one of our other income sources, so that's been well. I think that's about it.
All right.
I'll let somebody else.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm gonna come up real quick, 'cause we had a wonderful time working with Kiwanis as the Sir Optimists. It was really fun to teach some of the students how to separate the early spuds.
We should've had a proclamation for the Sir Optimists.
That's okay, we worked with Kiwanis.
You can share it.
We shared in finance and also with time.
You know that we, we love you.
Yes, and we love you guys, too. And so it was very exciting to see the students grow. At first, they were even shy about talking about with us, and we felt like, as we showed up, that they did a lot in conversation with us. And then also, we did some rocks, and they made some decorations things with me, and so we did art with bark, so.
Very nice. All right. Did he convince any of you to come up?
Come on, be bold.
Should I just pick one?
Can I say something really quickly?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I'm a new member of the Sylvan Ranch Community Garden, and I just wanna talk about how gardening really brings people together. I'm a new resident of Citrus Heights. I just bought my first home when I moved from Carmichael.
Welcome.
So I've only been in Citrus Heights for a couple of months, but I've already made people that are like family to me, and I'm, and it's all because of gardening, and I joined the garden. So I'm really excited to, hopefully, you know, through this upcoming week, and the rest of the year, and ongoing, watch gardening bring more people together, and really, you know, have a sense of community and be able to give back, so.
Very nice.
I just wanted to.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Do you wanna help? I'm one of the founding members of the garden, and been there since the very beginning, when councilman, when the council came up with the idea to do that, and I've seen so many changes. When we first started, it was just about a big pile of weeds and dirt out there, and we've, and just have to, up to like 72 garden boxes now. Most of them are all raised up for, two feet, and started out, people had to, they wanted it raised, they bought the dirt, they bought the wood, we built it up. Now we're up to the point where we've got enough members that we're able to actually buy the wood and raise them, and now the Republic Services got their compost bin there, so using a lot of that compost to help fill them in, too. So it's a big improvement over the last many, many years, and it's all due to all the members that we have coming out and working on, on the weekends, at night, and other days, and the volunteers we've had out there, the AmeriCorps, Target, Girl Scouts, and, and boys and girls from the high school doing their community service, coming out there and working with us and making all those improvements. We got that tool shed that was an Eagle project for the Boy Scouts, the flag poles was an Eagle project for the Boy Scouts. We built ourselves a greenhouse, and we'd have a way to raise some funds by selling plants at the beginning of the year to both garden members and the general public, which allows us to have funds to do all these things with, so. Been a big change over the years, and we thank the City Council for all the support they've given us in the past, and all the members that are putting out all their daily efforts and weekly efforts to make the garden look good.
Thank you.
I know that was a brainchild of Henry Tingle and Jeannie Bruins that negotiated that spot, so we thank both of them.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Councilmember Middleton.
So there's no secret that my husband, Ben Middleton, has been a huge champion of gardening. It started off as a COVID project, and he turned it into something where he wanted to give back to the local community. I went to the Mesa Verde grand opening, and to see how that garden started, and the work that these youth put into it, I hope you guys, you know, continue with this. There is a huge disconnect between where folks understand where our food comes from, it doesn't just, it doesn't come from the grocery store, it has to get there, and the fact that you are learning about this process and you participated. I remember those 100-degree days when you guys were out there about to sweat to death, and I really appreciate the fact that you stuck with it. Each class over each semester really worked hard, and to see the end result, I mean, if you get a chance to kind of stop by and peek through the fence, please do so, because it's amazing the work that all of these organizations together, Sir Optimists, Kiwanis, Key Club, you guys did an amazing job, and I'm very, very proud of you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez Taft.
So I'm someone who's actually known not to have a green thumb at all, but I was raised by amazing gardeners, and in fact, our, our garden in San Francisco used to provide all the flowers for a festival of our local church. And so I know the hard work that goes into this, and I just so appreciate all of your dedication, and, and I know it's a lot of fun being out there and, and seeing something grow, you know, just, just watching something from seed, and, and it grows, and it's beautiful, or you can eat it, and it's wonderful, so thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Councilmember Schaefer.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I visited the community garden last year. It was a really great experience with the, and maybe it actually might've been the year before that, where they, we did the workshop on watering, and just amazing, and as someone who loves to eat vegetables and not necessarily grow them, I, I just appreciate all the hard work you guys put in out there. Thank you very much, and love to see the, the young people really learn about gardening and learning about cultivation is a, is a fantastic skill. Thank you.
Nice. Just, anything else, Vice Mayor? Nope, okay, just thank you for, yeah, what you're doing out there. It's actually, it's, it's, it's a symbol of Citrus Heights, too, so thank you for what you're doing, the hard work, the hot, the heat and all that, you can have it. I, I'm like Tim, I like to eat vegetables, not, not, not grow them, so thank you for what you do. We're gonna have you guys come up here, we're gonna stay back here because there's so many, oh yeah, go ahead, and then we'll take a picture, so if you could come up here and start forming up.
We now have a routine down for our big group picture. Make sure I don't get hidden this time.
Yeah.
Pretend you like each other, come on.
There you go. Keep pushing them.
Yeah, that's fine.
There you go.
Yes, you got your gardening hat on. Is that gonna do it, Rachel? Is it gonna work?
If we could just get this side to scoot in a little bit, yeah.
Turn 45 degrees. Squish it in. Bring it in, come on, guy. Pretend you like them, there you go. Okay, I think we got it.
You guys are good? Excellent.
Good, all right. Thank you.
So we're gonna go back to presentation number four, which is the recognition of 2024 Spirit of San Juan Honoree, DeColle Reed Herbert, Lykan K-8 student.
I'd like to go ahead and invite Lykan K-8 student DeColle Reed Herbert to the podium to accept a certificate recognizing her outstanding accomplishments, which earned her a Spirit of San Juan Award. Hello again.
Hi.
This is gonna be fun. I'm gonna go ahead and read this recognition, certificate of recognition for you, and then maybe we'll have some comments, let you speak, and then we'll take some pictures and all of that, okay?
All right.
Okay. This is presented by the City of Citrus Heights to DeColle Reed Herbert. Am I saying it right?
DeColle.
See, they told, they, yeah, DeColle, I'm sorry, DeColle. The City of Citrus Heights hereby recognizes DeColle Reed Herbert as a 2024 Spirit of San Juan Award Honoree. DeColle is commended for her outstanding leadership and pioneering contributions to Lykan K-8, which include being a founding member of the Students of Color Club on campus, participation in the Student Senate as a student senator, and starting a recycling program on campus. On behalf of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, we congratulate, congratulate DeColle on her achievements, and wish her well in all of her future endeavors. Presented on this 23rd day of May in the year 2024. So thank you very much. Any comments? Go ahead.
Just amazing, absolutely fabulous. I am so proud of the work that you've done, and the way you took initiative to bring things and new thoughts and ideas to your school, and to really stand up and to represent not only your own values and beliefs, but those, those of, those around you who may not have a voice, and I hope you continue to be a voice for the voiceless in the future.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
And Councilmember Lopez Taft.
Thank you for being a leader. You know, when so many people stay silent, you decided to step up, and I really, really appreciate that. My daughter went to Lykan, and I know it's a great school, and you've just made it greater, so thank you for being who you are and adding, adding your special flavor to the school.
Thank you.
Ditto, and, you know, it's, it's not every day that we get to see a person of your age achieving so much so early, so, so you're special, you're, I mean, you're like, you're like at the top, and keep going, keep going, keep, keep reaching, keep going, and I have a feeling we'll hear about you more in, in the future, okay? So do your thing. You wanna have some words? Go ahead. Show us your stuff.
I'm not really sure what to say, other than my vision is kind of blurry, 'cause I don't have my glasses on right now, but thank you for honoring me.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We're gonna come down and take some pictures. Would the family like to come up also?
We have some.
Thank you. Congratulations to the girl. Yes. Thank you.
She's tall. Thank you. This is mom. Yes. That's what sisters say.
She's taller than mom.
Yes. Oh, it's in her big head.
I'm shaking.
Hold up, hold up, hold up.
Thank you.
I'm excited to meet you.
Nice to see you.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. It's great.
Yeah.
I remember mine, and I remember the light.
of the 2024 Sustainability Scholarship winners and the 2023 annual report.
Good evening, good evening, City Council, Mayor Daniels, esteemed city staff, and residents of Citrus Heights. I'm very excited tonight to present our annual report, but even more so excited to present the sustainability scholarship recipients for 2024. I will start with the presentation on the annual report, and then we'll do the sustainability scholarships directly afterward. So Republic Services, we are your residential trash hauler and recycling hauler for residential. The services we provided in the past year include the traditional services, trash recycling, organics collection curbside, as well as mortal oil collection and oil filters, household batteries, and appointment-based sharps, as well as the three bulky waste cleanups per year, six additional bags of leafs during the November, December, and January months, Christmas tree collection three weeks after Christmas, holiday lights recycling here at City Hall, as well as assistance for those with physical limitations, and the Citrus Heights Customer Service Guide calendar. This past year, we supported a lot of events for Citrus Heights, including the city events, the Public Works Showcase and Career Fair, the Community Service Day, Stars and Stripes, a Halloween Parade and Harvest Festival, Palt Trunk and Treat, Sunday Fun Day, and the Tree Lighting. We also supported other community events, as well as the Citrus Heights Rotary Crab Feed, the Wall That Heals, and National Night Out. I mentioned the Customer Service Guide calendar, it's a, it's a, a content that we love to produce for you guys. We have the poster contest that is packaged along with that, so last year, the winners were selected, 12 of them, one of them gets to have their art on the front of that calendar guide, the other 11 are featured inside of the calendar guide as well, and then earlier this year, we represented them and recognized them here at City Council. For our outreach campaigns in the last year, we delivered things like the direct mailers, social ads, newspaper ads, bill inserts, and flyers, all aimed at increasing diversion and bringing awareness to the services we provide. One of the campaigns we did last year is the Super Sorter Challenge, where residents are able to win a free month of service just by sorting all their materials correctly into their carts. And mentioned earlier a couple times, we host three compost workshops per year. We do host them at the Sylvan Ranch Community Garden. We do have one coming up this Saturday, and also, as mentioned earlier, we provide compost for the Sylvan Ranch Community Garden, for residents to come by, grab your shovel, go ahead and shovel it up, and take it home with you. We also have two other places that we provide the service at, here at City Council, or City Hall, right in the back of the parking lot, but as well as the Miller's Ace Hardware, right behind their facility, so three places we provide compost for Citrus Heights in the local area. So results, from last year, we have trash at 21,324 for landfill, as well as illegal dumping, 386 yards, and for bulky items, 824 tons, and that is 17% of the total bulky waste collected in that past year. For diverted materials or recycled materials, we have a long list of them, so organics waste, so yard waste and food waste, those came in at 12,000, roughly 12,000 tons. Recycling, so misrecycling, glass, metal, plastic, paper, that came in at 5,630 tons. Bulky items, 4,945 tons, that's that 83%, so more, most of that is being recycled from the bulky waste program. Batteries, 200, or 2,951 bags of batteries, 5,115 used oil gallons, 1,000 used oil filters, and all of those are collected curbside. Appliances, so large appliances, refrigerators, stoves, that came in at 166 tons this past year. E-waste, computers, screens, 8.6 tons, and then household sharps, also collected curbside for appointment-based sharps, that's 205 containers collected this past year. All that great diversion led us to a 50.1% diversion this past year, so those materials did not go to the landfill, they went somewhere else and had a second life. This is 10 percentage points above the contractual minimum, 40% and 2% higher than the prior year in 2022, so progress. So that was the annual report. Now I'm gonna get into the sustainability scholarships. I'm gonna give a little preface of the sustainability scholarship itself. I'm gonna invite a colleague of mine to come up and talk about the foundation, and then I will start calling names. I'm gonna ask Mayor Daniels to come down and hand the certificate to the recipients, take a picture, and then after we have taken pictures with all the recipients, we'll do a group picture. So now I will invite Jonathan Wesson, he is a board member for the San Juan Education Foundation.
Thank you. So I'm Jonathan Wesson, I'm here representing the San Juan Education Foundation. We were founded in 1991, and we are committed to, and still to this day, help enrich the lives of our educators here in the San Juan School District, and with through that, we also strive to help find and support the students and the lives that they touch every day, and I'm happy to be here tonight to help celebrate in these scholarships and help in that journey of being committed. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. All right, this sustainability scholarship, we do offer it each year, we give $1,000 each to three graduating seniors. They are living in Citrus Heights, going to a school within San Juan Unified School District, and we have an essay contest component along with that, and this is for folks who are invested or going to be putting some effort into environmental services, or just enriching their community and environment. So now I will invite Mayor Daniels down, and then we will start calling out our winners.
Thank you. As I head down, if any council members have comments about the item, go ahead and share them now, and, and then we'll meet all down there after we do the individuals.
All right. Okay, our first recipient tonight will be Leila Sadiki. She is graduating from Mesa Verde High School. She plans on attending CSU Sacramento, and she will be pursuing a nursing degree. A couple interesting things about her is that she loves pasta salad, so do I, and she will be the first female in her family to go to college.
Wow.
Congratulations.
And then right over here, we're gonna take a picture. You wanna stand right here next to the mayor? All right, Leila, just hang out right here, we're gonna, all right, our next recipient is Landon Iannan, graduating from Bella Vista High School. Landon plans on attending UC Davis. This will help support him in his efforts to become a biomedical engineer. Couple interesting things about Landon, he's an avid runner and loves to run marathons, and donated some copies of his children's book to Sutter Children's Hospital in Sacramento.
What a great guy. What a great guy. That must've been a hard choice.
Wonderful. All right, and our third recipient tonight, Pluto Bowen. Pluto's graduating from El Camino High School, plans on attending Cal Poly Humboldt. Will be using the scholarship in an efforts to pursue a degree in environmental services. And one thing, or a couple of things about Pluto, Pluto loves Garfield and was a stage manager for three years running.
Pluto's a dog and Garfield's a cat.
Yes, wonderful. So those are our three Sustainability Scholarship winners. Please give it up for them, and then we will now be taking a group photo.
Smile. All right. Very nice.
You gotta go. All right, next item, please.
Next item is public comment, and if you wish to address the City Council during the meeting, please fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself, the city clerk. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each. The mayor has the discretion to reduce the allotted time. We have a countdown display that will flash red at the end of the allotted time. Also, consistent with the Brown Act, the council is prohibited from engaging in a discussion or taking action on any item not appearing on the agenda.
And Amy, do you have any written ones? Besides the...
No, I do not.
Like, go ahead and call up David Warren.
Good evening. My name is David Warren. I'm here tonight to discuss something a little different. First, my comments I'm about to make are not in any way or should be considered a criticism of CHPD. They've gone out of their way to assist me, and unfortunately, in this world, no matter what they want to do, it's impossible to take care of the idiots that have created my problem. In the last few months, I've appeared several times before the City Council on various matters. And immediately thereafter, I started getting phone calls at home saying, "It's too bad Hitler didn't catch you all. We should kill all the Jews." And on one occasion, when my wife, who's an invalid now, picked up the phone, and as I was picking it up, there was a man saying, "I'm going to rape and kill you." Now, the antisemitism that is running through the world has reached Citrus Heights. Now, I am addressing the City Council tonight because for some reason it appears that after I speak to the City Council, whoever these people are, seem to respond because they see me here, and then start picking up the phone and calling me. The phone calls come that show no phone number, and they somehow beat my system at home that says you're not supposed to, calls are not supposed to come through unless they show a phone number, but nonetheless, they do. Now, I can't stop hatred. I can't stop stupidity in our community, but I can't speak up and say, "This is not what we stand for." There was a man by the name of Meyer Kahani. He was a rabbi who went off the deep end of New York, started the Jewish Defense League, and then went to Israel and became an extraordinarily crazy man who believed in the manifestancy of Hebrews to take over all what was Palestine as described in the Bible, which is just as stupid as the people who are fighting today all over the world, saying, "My belief is the correct one." But he did say one thing, "Never again," and I believe that. I have lived in this community for 25 years. I cannot wear my yarmulke in the community because when I was at Safeway, on several occasions, young men have come and knocked it off my head.
Oh, no.
Now, if my wife were not so ill, I would say, "The heck with it," and I'd stand up to these people, but I can't afford to be injured because I'm my wife's caregiver. I can't afford to have people calling my home and threatening my wife. Now, is there anything the CHPD can do? No, we can't stop it. The CHPD is not designed to put traps on telephones and spend hours trying to find out what stupid people we have that are bothering me. And in good conscience, when someone knocks my yarmulke off my head, I can't call the CHPD and ask an officer to risk himself by rushing over to wherever I am and being involved in an auto accident. It's only a hat. It's symbolic to me, and it's symbolic to the stupid young people that do it. And in fact, if they, if they're that way, if they, if they are caught and disciplined, their parents are going to say, "Don't do it again," but their parents have that view, otherwise they wouldn't. Now, I'm not speaking, necessarily speaking to you. I'm speaking to the members of the community, and especially to the idiots that are going to see me on this cable station today. And I'm telling them that I'm not going anywhere. My wife's not going anywhere, and the hatred in this community has to stop. I'm tired of people walking up to me at CVS and saying, "I know where you live," and then walking away. I'm tired of a man walking up to me in such, in the Safeway and saying, "I know where you live," and then walking away. I may be older, but I have principles and values, and I will not prostitute them out of fear. And I hope those who are watching that think they can threaten me learn from this brief statement that I'm not going anywhere, never again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Thank you for coming to speak. I appreciate it definitely. And I just want to encourage anybody that is, is receiving any similar behavior to report it. It's not going to be tolerated, it's not to be tolerated, it's not who we are, and we can only hope that, on some level, that somebody demonstrating such behavior is caught and dealt with appropriately. Thank you, Mr. Warren. Okay, any other speakers? Amy, I don't believe we have any. Next item, please.
Next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, May 17th, I attended a Sac Valley Division meeting. It was held in Lake Shasta, Shasta Lake, sorry. And we actually went over a couple of proposals and had a few presentations about affordable housing. And there was a tour of the dam, but I didn't go because got to get home, get kids off the bus, right? It's a long drive. Then it was on 5/16, I went to the Greater Sacramento Economic Council annual event. It was great to see a lot of our regional leaders, to hear what's going on, and, you know, watch everyone and see what accolades they've gotten and how they've helped to impact our greater Sacramento region. On the 16th, I attended the CHPD Oath of Office. Again, it's always so great to see so many folks joining our police department and holding up the values and protecting our community. As mentioned earlier, on the 15th, I went to the Mesa Garden Grand Opening, which was amazing, watching kids pick strawberries and snap peas off the vine and eat them. It was just amazing. I couldn't, I can't begin to describe it. And then earlier in the month, on the 13th, I had my Sac Valley Division regular meeting, and we discussed upcoming legislation, budget cuts that are being brought down by the governor, and a various host of other things. Also, Citrus Heights Arts is having their second Art Beat Festival. It's an art and music festival that's free to the community. It starts May 31st through June the 2nd. It's over in the Birdcage Shopping Center by Jamba Juice. There will be an indoor art gallery, vendors, kids' area. So it's a really great time for you to come out, connect with the community, have a little bit of fun right after the holiday. So those are my comments.
Thank you very much.
It's a three-day event?
Three-day event.
Oh, I thought it was one, oh, three. Great.
Councilmember Lopez Ta.
All right, it's been more a busy week than anything. On Monday, I started off attending Supervisor Sue Frost's meeting, and this, this meeting was a little bit different. She had a speaker on fentanyl, the fentanyl crisis that's hit our, our country, our state, our city, and the numbers are startling and quite frightening. So I'm going to simply say, "Do not take any drugs from anyone other than prescribed from your doctor. Please, please." This is, you know, the one pill can kill campaign, and it, it just has, has shaken me how, how scary the statistics are and growing exponentially. On Tuesday, I attended my Chasin Citrus Heights Area 7, 8 and 9 area meeting, and we had a great mosquito talk from our wonderful friend, Luz Maria. And yesterday, I attended our quarterly two-by-two at San Juan Unified School District. It's always really great to hear from our Unified School District partner, and, and I was, I asked the question, and I, I do like to ask this question because it is of concern in our communities about the budget, because the California state budget is comprised, 40% goes to education at the state level. And so my question to San Juan Unified was, will be, we be okay if they cut significant portions of their budget? And it was very heartwarming to hear our superintendent simply say, "We do all, we do everything we can to not touch that classroom and those students." And that's really, really important for us to hear, so I thought that was a great meeting. That's it for me.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Schaefer.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to, I know that this isn't typically addressed, but I just want to express my deepest sympathies for Mr. Warren and the, and the antisemitism he's experienced in our community, and I condemn anyone who's has similar feelings to that. Moving on, so on the, on May 15th, May 16th, I had, we had a SAICOG meeting. For those who aren't aware, this is Sacramento Area Council of Governments. This is a transportation planning agency that many different cities sit on this board. I think there's 28 cities there, and we are looking at adopting the 2025 blueprint, and some troubling steps there. And I understand the purpose for this is to reduce greenhouse gases and vehicles miles traveled, but to reduce the number of single-family homes. The blueprint calls for a 50% reduction in single-family home building in Sacramento County. It's pretty drastic to me. The council, the meeting went very long, it was about three and a half hours, and we ended the meeting with any, without any consensus for a vote at all. So very controversial, I'm sure you'll probably hear and read more about this later, but it was a very tough meeting. So I also attended, on the 17th, I also attended the meeting, Cal Cities Meeting hosted by the Cal Cities North Area President, Portia Middleton. I think that the, it was very interesting to meet so many great people from all over the place, Grass Valley and Shasta Lake, and just it was a pretty well-attended meeting. And I did do the Shasta Dam Tour, which is a very interesting tour. The elevator broke while we were there, so elevator travels about 480 feet from the top of the dam to the bottom of the dam. The dam is, was built in the 30s, and it, they're just, they have not done public tours since 2019. On June 3rd, they open up free tours for anyone who wants to tour the dam there. It's a pretty amazing structure.
It's a damn good time.
You can have a damn good time. And so, so that was a, that was a great event. We did have a member of a group, her great-grandfather was, was actually pictured in, in one of the photographs of the last bucket being poured into the concrete for, for Shasta Dam, and they, it was interesting how they, they, the diversion tunnel is actually a former train tunnel, and that diversion tunnel still exists today. So, but they generate, they have five very, very large generators there. They generate a lot of electric power. When Shasta Dam was first envisioned, it was not envisioned to be a hydroelectric facility, but because of the time that was being built, there was a demand for shipbuilding in San Francisco, so they added the generators in, in a very expedient way, and then shortly after the war started. So it was a very interesting tour, and the elevator is fixed. So I would encourage you, if you're up in Lake Shasta, it's worth the tour. It's really worth the trip. They do four tours a day, so starting at nine, and the last one is over at 2:00, so. With that, I just want to remind everyone that this, even though I will not be able to attend, I will be out of state on Memorial Day, but Memorial Day, we have a Memorial Day celebration on Monday. I would encourage you to, Sylvan Cemetery does a wonderful, and that's right here, and it does a wonderful tribute to our fallen veterans and fallen, and I, it's, it's a great event, I would encourage everyone to attend that, so. With that, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa.
I've been, seems like I've been very busy. So we all went to, and most of us went to Hearts for Heroes, where they recognized our very own now Commander Mike Wells and his dog Ellie. You know, Ellie is our dog that is for the comfort of first responders that we have in our, in our service, our 911 operators, our police people, and she's a great dog, and this organization supplies dogs to firemen, homes, you know, just, and we got, we got only, I think, the only comfort dog for the police, and she's a great dog, and he's a great guy, and wife is nice. I sat next to her, it was a great event. But then, on the 14th, I went to Nicholas Dairy. This is like a new thing, this was incredible. You talk about Farm Week. Nicholas Dairy was a dairy back in the 1800s, and it was like probably the foremost dairy of the area. They had the best equipment every time there was, you know, instead of being out there milking the cows twice a day by hand, they were the first dairy to get automatic milkers. So over the years, they've have, it's out in Elk Grove, and it's part of now the Seward District. So the Seward District, which I'm on the board, kind of owns it, and they teamed up with an outfit called SacramentoSplash.org, which is a nonprofit that educates kids, and they, they operate, the dairy now is just a place where kids from grades two through five go and experience what they call the AWE program, A-W-E. And the AWE stands for agriculture, what's the W? This is incredible. Water and energy or environment. So when, when I was there, there's no more cows, cows are gone, but some of the equipment is still there, so the kids learn how it goes from cow to carton. And they have 40-minute sessions at various places where they can, different aspects of the environment are taught to them. There's a certain program for grades two and three, and then another program for four and five. They get hydroponics. It is just such an incredible, I was there when the kids were there, listening to the docents give their, their talks. They, they grow vegetables, they grow flowers, they teach composting, they teach these kids mostly from Title I schools that have probably never seen, you know, anything, they do some leatherworking and they get to take home a key thing, and they, it's, when I was there, a monarch butterfly had just formed a chrysalis, and I heard that chrysalis hatched a couple days ago, and the kids were there to watch it, so another group was there. And unfortunately, San Juan doesn't go down there very much because they just don't want to send the buses. So the parents volunteered to drive the kids, but they don't want the parents there because they, it's really for kids, it's not for the parents. I says, "Why don't you just get a tent, get a Starbucks carton, and put the parents over there and let the kids go do their thing?" Anyhow, it's a wonderful thing, you know, it's the kids, every kid should have to go through this program, it's just wonderful. So I went there. Then we had the, the economic, that was another event we all went to, the economic, annual economic thing at the bar, and that was a social event. Then Brews and the Burbs, we went to Brews and the Burbs. You went to that? He doesn't drink beer, but I did. It was, it's all right. It was, it was tasty. Um, then, at the same day, though, before I went to Brews and the Burbs, I wish I'd gone to Brews and the Burbs before, I went to Kevin Bracy's positivity party. When it said on the ticket, bring ear, earplugs, I kind of ignored that. I thought, oh, what are they gonna have, one little hop song, you know? Mm-mm. It was so loud, and the kids just danced, it was at Mesa Verde Gym, and the kids just wear sparkly, they put the dark, and the kids are wearing all these sparklies, and I could only stay twenty minutes because I didn't bring earplugs. So it was very loud. But he is a incredible, uh, energetic guy that gets these kids, uh, to do good stuff. I did go to Sue Frost's, uh, meeting as well. I won the door prize, which was two tickets to the, um, what is that, baseball team in Sacramento? Yeah. And I'm donating that to the Veterans Center, who is having an event, uh, in June to raise money, and that'll be a raffle ticket. But the speaker is Angela Webb and her husband Webb, and I think he said he trains even our police in drug recognition. And, uh, she does give talks throughout, uh, the area to schools, uh, really, she gave everybody Narcan. And Alfred has had to administer Narcan to some of the homeless people he's run across. It's the antidote to fentanyl. And it, it's just very enlightening, we learned, I know, Mary Jane, we all learned a lot. Uh, one pill can kill, and their organization is, let's see, they're gonna be, I think their next one is Rio Linda on August fourteenth. No, North Highlands on August fifth, and Orange Vale August nineteenth. It, it, you bring your kids to see this because they'll learn a lot. Went to, after I left Sue Frost, I ran over to the SOAR meeting, want to thank our code enforcement and Susan McClendon for coming in to, is be speaking at our SOAR meeting. Then the next morning, I went to the mosquito, um, mosquito district meeting, and we aren't really big on West End yet, that's not really, we still want to look for the day-biting mosquitoes. But we also have now got our dead bird, hot, dead bird hotline open. So if you find a dead bird, you go on the website, fightthebite.net, and there's a underneath, which says, service requests. It'll say, report a neglected pool. If you see a pool that's neglected, it'll say, call in for a dead bird, and we'll come and get your dead bird. Um, what was interesting was, you know, we, we do do, um, yellow jackets. So we, we set up traps around this time of year to trap the queens, that they're just emerging, and then they want to go find their own little nest somewhere. So our first, um, trap, we got six hundred and sixty-two queens in our first set of traps. So that's how many fewer, uh, but this, there's more traps to pick up, we haven't picked those up yet. So, uh, we want to report dead birds, we want to report day-biting mosquitoes. And then, what else did I do? I went to sewer meeting. Uh, you know, the sewer rates are going up, I reckon, I told you that last time, but we also, at this last meeting, we increased the lifeline deductions, that if you are two hundred percent of the federal poverty level, which I don't even know what that is, but if you're two hundred percent, then you qualify for discounts. And the discounts going up this year, basically, if you get, which we all do, get both the sewer collection and the sewer treatment, comes out to about a hundred and ninety-five dollars a year. And if you qualify for smud, you qualify for sewer, that's enough qualification. And so if you think you qualify, or want to know if you qualify, just go on the sewer's website, Sacsewir dot whatever, and it's there. Just put Sacsewir, it comes right up. And then last but not least, I had today, I had lunch with all the vice mayors, okay? So we have a little get-together with vice mayors, vice chairs of supervisors. So I had vice, uh, ba, lunch with, uh, Roseville, Folsom, Galt, and Bonnie Gore from the Placer County Board of Supervisors. That was fun. And I think that's it. That's it, it was a lot of it.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Uh, not too much to report, uh, again, with my fellow council members, attended Hearts for Heroes. Uh, what a great organization, what an incredible, uh, organization, what an incredible opportunity for Citrus Heights to be involved in such a thing. It's mainly, uh, uh, associated with the fire departments, but, uh, we're breaking ground, and, and hopefully it'll, it'll re, be, uh, extended out to more police departments. Uh, very nice organization. Attended the Regional Transit Board recently, uh, not too much out of that. The main thing is, we did the executive director's evaluation, and, uh, Henry Lee, uh, we all love him, he's doing a great job, and, uh, hopefully he will continue on for a long time. Did a Mondays with the mayor, I want to thank Councilmember Schaefer for filling in on, uh, one of those, and, uh, hopefully people will continue to take advantage of coming by City Hall any Monday from nine AM to twelve PM, and I'll be here to speak to you. We will not have that on this Monday, uh, Memorial Day, but, uh, any, any Monday after that, hopefully you can come on by. Um, attended the Sacramento Regional Air Board meeting, uh, budget stuff mainly out of that. I think we approved a budget a little over sixty-five million with, uh, a little over a hundred million in reserves, which is just amazing. I just, I'm just stunned sometimes. Um, and, uh, attended the San Juan Unified School District two-by-two meeting with, uh, Councilmember Lopez Taff, who commented on it. And, uh, the only I would add to it is that, um, I did bring up, uh, the, uh, aspect that I, I would hope that the school district would look into, uh, something that came out during our, our effort to, or our, uh, uh, processing of whether or not we would, uh, look to have our own school district. And that is, uh, why kids are leaving Citrus Heights to go to school somewhere else. Approximately two thousand kids leave our city every day to go to school somewhere else. And that's an indication, obviously, of a problem. And hopefully they will take that serious and, and explore that a little further and try to figure out why that's happening. Attended the Citrus Heights Police Department Ceremony, where we brought in an incredibly large amount of officers. Um, it was so nice to see, um, so many officers coming in at one time into our police department. Um, let me see, Monday is Memorial Day, City Hall will be closed, but more than that, um, uh, it is a good time to spend with your week, your, your family, but, uh, teach your kids about Memorial Day and what it's all about. Um, i- it's not just hot dogs and swimming pools, uh, it, it's a very solemn, um, holiday. I, I don't even like that word necessarily, but, um, it, it has a purpose to it, and hopefully, um, families will take a little time to, to understand that. And, uh, last but not least, I think, uh, I see a few people in the room who might be about eighteen years or, or younger. If you are, could you please stand up? I love it, they do the, it's to tell the truth thing, remember the old, they look at each other. Come on, come on up.
If you're still in high school.
If you're still in high school, go ahead and stand. And then co, come up to this podium for a minute, please? Don't be shy, it'll be fun. We have prizes for everybody. If you don't mind, take a moment, come up to the podium, the, the, uh, the microphone, and tell us who you are, where you're from, and why you're here.
I'll go first. Uh, my name's Maxim Shadyak. I live here in Citrus Heights. Um, I go to Bella Vista High School, and I'm here for a, um, for a project, so.
Very good.
Uh, to visit a meeting, you know, check it out.
Yep.
So it's actually my first time, it's pretty cool.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next up.
I'm Shayla Carlton, I'm here for the same reason, but, um, being here, like, it's cool to see how, uh, works and stuff.
Welcome.
Um, hi, I'm Kaylee, I'm here for the same reason, but I'm from Fair Oaks, and this is my first meeting. It's definitely interesting to hear all this new stuff.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jessica Jasso, and, uh, I'm here for the same reason, and, and it's really nice to hear what's been going on so far.
Thank you.
By the way, remember, you're all on TV.
Yeah, you're all on TV, so.
No pressure.
Hi, uh, my name's Alexis Anavol, and I'm a resident in Citrus Heights, and I go to Bella Vista High School, and I'm here to check off the same project.
Thank you.
Um, hi, my name's Javi, um, I live in Citrus Heights, and I'm just here for, uh, my class, American Gov.
Thank you.
Um, hello, my name is Aldo, I'm from Citrus Heights, I go to school in, I go to Bella Vista High School, and I'm here for my government class.
Thank you.
Um, my name is Chloe Cardenas, I am also coming here from Bella Vista High School, but I also decided I can take it as an opportunity to learn about my neighboring communities and their issues.
Thank you.
My name, my name is Tori Delisle, I actually used to go to Bella Vista, but I don't anymore. He does, and he's doing the government project, so I'm here with him.
Good support, all right.
All right, as the last one, you get to sing us a song. Cause we saw you up front earlier. Now, go ahead and introduce yourself.
Wyatt Knutson, I go to Bella Vista. Um, I live here in Citrus Heights, right down Greenback, and, uh, I'm here for the same project. But, uh, it's pretty cool learning, it's my first time here, it's pretty cool, uh, being here.
I know how many are here, but.
Probably like.
Prior council meetings, we.
It's probably like.
Prior council meetings, we've had students, and they all come from Bella Vista, well, how big's your class?
Probably about thirty kids. There's thirty kids in the actual class itself, I think in the senior class, there's probably six hundred.
Are you all seniors?
Maybe, yeah.
Play football?
What's that?
Play football?
Oh, yeah, I used to. I got injured.
Aw, sorry.
I lost, I lost my scholarships and stuff.
Oh, no. So if you, if you guys want to take a picture, you can line up here and we'll, you know, you're evidence for your teachers.
Just line up here and we'll stand behind you guys, take a picture.
Can we stand up here?
Yeah.
Hand, hand your one phone or a couple phones to.
Don't be shy, short people in the front, tall people in the back.
Bunch together.
Rachel, take it. Somebody give Rachel their phone.
There you go.
So we kind of center ourselves.
Hold on, hold on.
Good thing we.
All right, thank you guys. And don't leave, we have an, we have an issue or an item about high school coming up, okay? So don't leave, it's gonna be real short.
I just wanted to, while I, while everybody was putting together, uh, Councilmember Schaefer informed me that the federal poverty level for a single person is fifteen thousand dollars, which means if you are a single person who gets a sewer bill and you make less than thirty, because it's two hundred percent of the poverty level, so if you make thirty thousand or less, you qualify for the discount if you pay the sewer bill in your name. And if you are a pair of people, it's forty thousand. And there's a lot of people that make forty thousand or less, so why not save a hundred and ninety-five bucks on your sewer bill, uh, and by calling the district? I want to encourage that because there's so much, this, this money is non-rate payer money, so it's money that we earn by interest, whatever, it's not rate payer money. So we have a pot of money, and I hate to see it all go to Sacramento and Citrus Heights could benefit.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
The next item is consent calendar items seven, eight, nine, and ten.
Move approval.
Second.
Wait, wait, wait.
I want one out.
Does anybody want to pull the item from the consent calendar?
Number eight, number eight for comment.
They were gonna pull number eight for just a comment?
Yes.
Then, uh, same motion? Mr. Schaefer, same?
Yes.
Okay. And then, uh, Councilmember Middleton?
Yes.
Okay, so it's been moved, uh, we'll, we'll, uh, do items seven, nine, and ten on the consent calendar, and then, uh, you know what, actually, we can just take the comment, right? Yeah, go ahead.
Take the comment, and then I'll, okay. The comment I wanted to make was our audit, and, and those of us who are not particularly financially, always appreciate those who are, and I just want to comment, and, and I know they're not here because they have commitments, but our staff is so incredible. Doing an audit with an outside auditing firm is tough. I mean, it's, they come through and they, they make sure that every dot is dotted and every line is crossed, and they do a great job. And our, our financial department of Susan and Alberto are just wonderful, and I just want to compliment staff for the great job. We have a clean audit, and it went well, and I just want to relay that to staff, that we appreciate the hard work, because they're always behind the scenes, you know, Regina gets to come up here, but the staff, you know, finance is always back there.
Thank you for your comments, I'll make sure that, share those with them, and they know.
We appreciate it.
They very much will appreciate that.
And always proud when we, because I know we get awards for our financial reporting and stuff, but there's, that's a great team over there.
And very important work.
Okay, all with that, I'll move all the items, all the consent calendars.
So we'll go with the motion by Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa to move all items, is there a second?
I second.
And seconded by Councilmember Schaefer. Any comments or questions about the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, item passes. Next item, please.
The next item is regular calendar, item number eleven, is subject to school safety options. And there are four options that were presented on the city council agenda, and they will be presented by the police department.
Evening, Mayor, members of council, Alex Turcot, your chief of police. Uh, April twenty-fifth, city council, uh, asked us to return with some options for school safety surrounding, uh, the feasibility of putting SROs into the two high schools. Uh, we have several, we have four options for you here tonight, and we're seeking staff direction, or I'm sorry, council direction to staff. Option one is to hire and fund two additional full-time school resource officers. This would be an officer assigned to each high school, the fiscal impact of that would be approximately three hundred and seventy thousand per year. Um, currently, San Juan Unified utilizes Safe Schools Program to handle administrative investigations and threat assessments that were previously assigned to SROs. Um, this would add those school officers directly to the campus. The second option is to utilize existing sworn positions and to, um, move folks from other assignments to reassign them to our SRO program. So it'd have a lower, it would have, uh, negligible fis, fiscal impact, but would cause an operational impact, obviously, to the areas that they're currently assigned. Option three is, uh, kind of a creative option there of, of both. Um, what option three is, is to utilize our current PD traffic unit to create a school liaison program. And what this would be was, our current, uh, traffic officers, um, work well with the schools right now, they're, they fund, um, they, they are there for traffic enforcement, they're there for demon, demonstrations, alcohol awareness campaigns, uh, drug and safety, and do demos there, too. Um, they're currently are with the principal partnerships into some of those meetings. Um, this option would basically just enhance that to a more, uh, formal relationship and make, uh, primary, uh, liaison for the schools, so our safe schools would still continue to do that administrative duties of what used to be the SROs. Our traffic team would have designated personnel at each of the secondary schools to build that relationship with staff and to, um, ensure perimeter and life safety and traffic enforcement around the schools. This option would not, uh, need to reduce any of the other units, it would in fact enhance the traffic unit and work together in that fashion. It's very similar from a community engagement mission, to our command staff adopted the neighborhood areas as their primary community engagement mission. This would be the traffic team doing the same with the, uh, with the schools. And there's no fiscal impact on this option either. Option four would be to continue our partnership with San Juan Unified. Basically, this would be a no-change option, just continue to collaborate with San Juan and mitigate threats and enhance safety measures as, as, as applicable. And obviously, there'd be no fiscal impact for no change. Happy to discuss any of those further, or answer any questions that you have.
Um, can I get, uh, I, I believe that, um, we reached out to the school district and, uh, regarding this item, and can we get any comments regarding that?
Sure, uh, Mr. Mayor, Ashvina, your city manager, I did have a conversation with the superintendent of schools, Melissa Bassinelli, about, uh, the various options. One of the things that sh, she spoke to, and this is consistent with some of the discussion from, um, some of the site administrators, that at the secondary schools, especially at the peak times of pickup and, uh, drop-off, um, the mornings and afternoons, having some additional traffic enforcement in perimeter safety would be very helpful, uh, because that's a challenging time for schools, as anybody with school-aged children understand. Uh, and so that is something that certainly they would welcome. We also talked about, um, what the chief spoke to from a school liaison standpoint of having an officer that is really assigned, uh, to the high schools, um, but also having some familiarity with the, uh, with Sylvan Middle School, too, because that's one of the secondary schools also, uh, but kind of building those relationships with the staff, um, also with the students, and having some presence, uh, you know, around the campus would be helpful. We also spoke about the possibility, now this would still need to be worked out, um, but, uh, the motorcycle unit, they don't have a vehicle to do the reports in, um, they have their motorcycles, they would have to go back to the police station to do reports. We have talked about the notion of potentially getting them some, uh, space on campus, uh, to where they could do those reports from campus that would provide some further presence, uh, at the, the tool, two high schools, that's where the reports, um, it would be, would be taken, so to speak, and, and then distributed. So the chief and I have talked through this, um, I've had the conversations with the superintendent, uh, about that idea as well, and, uh, And, uh, it sounded like it would be helpful.
Thank you very much. Um, questions or comments by council members?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you go back to the, the next, this one? So one, two, three, fourth, fourth bullet. Fill at least two of our current vacancies. So these, would people be hired specifically for this job?
No, so currently, you know, our, our, we have been bolstering our patrol as we've been bringing our staffing back. So our specialty units have been carrying vacancies. And we were, we're waiting for folks to graduate field training before we can select and put folks in our specialty units. So currently, our motor unit is down about four, four vacancies, uh, operational vacancies, so.
So these aren't new recruits?
What's that?
These are not new recruits right out of the academy?
No, this would be, this would be current staff. They do have to wait for the recruits to get out to backfill behind them. But this would be, um, positions that are already allotted. There'll be an internal recruitment from existing staff.
And this is only one, school days?
They would work.
This would be just school days? Because if the kids aren't in school, there's no traffic to, to deal with?
Right, so this would be the normal traffic officer duties. They tend to, their shifts tend to align with school operating hours anyway. But for the rest of the year, they would just be part of the, the traffic team, and they would be, this would not be an SRO position. This would be a traffic unit position. So they would do all the same stuff the rest of the traffic unit would do. They would just have a specific, you know, adopt a school for each.
And you have a problem when our officers work four days? So there's always that fifth day that, how they, how they get covered?
Well, the nice thing about having it assigned to a team concept is there's always somebody that can backfill.
Wouldn't be the same officer every day of the week, would be?
Would mostly be, for the two high schools, um, there would definitely be one main point of contact. Our traffic sergeant would be a secondary point of contact, but for coverage of, um, you know, issues related to traffic enforcement or perimeter safety, the team works all five days. And so we'd be able to cover that down on any day that they're gone. Also, for training, or vacation, or court, or any of those kind of items, that by assigning it to a team, there's more redundancy there and there's more backup to be able to.
Cause sometimes kids establish a, a connection to an officer, and it's sad if the same officer isn't there all the time.
It'll mostly be the same officer, but like you, like you indicated, our, our staff works four tens, but we'll spread them out through the week. So they would mostly have the one officer contact, but then the team can back that officer up if there's days off or other needs that they have.
Okay.
Anything else down here? No. Um, any, uh, speakers?
I do not have any for this item.
I would just comment on, uh, what, uh, Vice Mayor Carpenski Costa said. I think it's a very good point that, um, establishing those relationships are really important. And, uh, that's one of the hopes from the program, establishing relationships. And it does seem like in an ideal world, it would be better to have one person here and one person there. But the reality of it also is that, um, not every person is gonna mesh with every officer or whatever. And maybe having a, another officer in that mix at times too, could end up being a very good thing. It could open up some communication.
To be fair, they're all great and they tend to get along well with people.
We know that. We know that.
Starts at the top, right? Starts at the top.
You could send LA.
Absolutely. Hear that, Commander?
Um, I want, I wanna comment on the, uh, um, the, the, um, possibility of it being part of the traffic unit. I've been, uh, trying and trying and trying to come up with an acronym, cause you gotta have an acronym for everything. And, uh, so it's the School Liaison Officer, so we could go with SLOW. And we could have the Slow Down Campaign, or something like that.
Oh, cool.
We just gotta work on that a little bit, maybe massage that up.
Stayed up all night thinking that, didn't you?
It's actually in the last three minutes, it finally came to me. It's like, what acronym could we come up with for this kind of thing? So I, I wanna, uh, take a moment and, you know, not necessarily knowing which direction we're going, but I do wanna take a moment to highly commend, um, City Manager Ashvini for working back and forth, um, and having a lot of conversations and, um, um, bringing this idea forward, um, as a, uh, possible solution to where I think the council has been, uh, and, and trying to find a, a path forward to, um, still doing what we need to be doing in the city, which is enforcing traffic and stuff like that. But still recognizing that, um, uh, we have a great need to protect our, our kids in school. And so, um, for me, it's not the ideal solution. But for me, it's definitely a, a, a move in the right direction. Um, and I'm hoping my fellow council members, um, also recognize that and, uh, will hopefully join me in, 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 uh, supporting, uh, option C.
Mayor, I'll, I'll support that. That is a, I think it is a very, uh, balanced approach. Um, we all know how I feel about the situation, but this is where I, I see a little bit of give because I do see where there is a benefit, not only to the students, but also to the community as well. So I, I support option C as well.
And I think the other thing, yeah, thank you, uh, Councilmember Middleton, it is that, uh, it puts officers in, uh, with close proximity, if not right in, um, heavy, heavy traffic areas to begin with. And so, um, there's a lot of win-wins here. I, I, I'm not finding a, a loose in here. And so, um, I, again, I just wanna commend Ash for, uh, bringing it forward as an idea, as a solution that, uh, hopefully gets us to the right spot.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I can't take all the credit. Chief and I put our heads together on this, and we knew that this is something that we were trying to come up with some solutions, so we, we worked together. Thank you for that. Appreciate those comments.
Any other questions or comments? Any motions?
I'll move.
Okay.
I'll move, um, option C, uh, to utilize the police department's current traffic unit to create a school liaison program to provide enhanced traffic enforcement and life safety, including perimeter security at Citrus Heights schools.
I'd like to second that.
It's been moved by Councilmember Middleton and seconded by Councilmember Schaefer. Any questions or comments to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Item passes. I wanna thank my fellow council members, honestly. Um, I think it's a big deal.
Anything to not put it on the agenda again.
Yeah. Not for at least a few more weeks. But, uh, no, honestly, thank you so much. Um, I think this is actually, uh, something that maybe even Citrus Heights, as it's known to, to be, might be, uh, a, a catalyst for other areas that take on the same kind of approach. So thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next item, department reports, and we have none. So the next item is city manager items.
Alright, well, good evening, uh, council and community. Ashvini, you're city manager, and I do have a number of updates here to, to go through. And so we'll go and get started. And, uh, one of the great things to highlight here is, uh, for the sixth year now, we're a Tree City USA recognition from the Arbor Day Foundation for Terrific Tree Canopy and the standard of care that's provided, um, primarily through our general services department. And Armando of Alaska is who, who you all know, who was part of the, uh, organizing both the events that you can see represented here. We had a tree planting day. You can see members of council there, uh, as well as, uh, a overall kind of beautification day that you can see on the right, which is consistent with our Citrus Heights Cares Campaign of kind of report, maintain, chip in. So definitely was a big chip in, wood chips and all that day. So, um, just really proud of the team. Uh, we also partner with Sunrise Park and Rec District in managing our urban forest.
Can I make a comment on this? I, I sent money to the Arbor Day Foundation and I got ten free trees. There's still sticks in the dirt. I mean, they're just, they just don't grow.
You know what kind of arid they are?
Uh, supposed to be, uh, dead buds. I'm getting red buds and, um, the, the flowering, what's that one that makes flowers? That has that really neat bark?
The flowery ones.
They didn't come.
Uh-oh. Well, well, you know, the good news is we have such a wonderful canopy to offset those for the time being.
They even sent me a thing saying, "We see you're a tree city." They do. They know Citrus Heights is a, is a tree city.
Terrific. Well, that's definitely one to celebrate. And so we've got another, uh, slide here. This is, uh, some big news. Um, and this is community project funding request. Uh, so as part of the federal budget, uh, our congress, Congressman Amibera went ahead and put in projects. And he really, this was based on feedback from his district. And I know at the Capitol to Capitol trip, that, uh, members of the council and members of staff made, we do a lot of work back there to see what we can do to, uh, lobby for projects that really benefit Citrus Heights. And I'm really happy to, to, uh, report that as part of the community project funding request, um, Congressman Beras submitted for San Juan Complete Streets Phase Two. And so this would be a, uh, federal budget appropriation of four million dollars towards that project. And you can see on the right here, the aerial picture has outlined in blue, that blue rectangle is Phase One, which we're just getting ready to start. That project's fully funded and, and ready to go. Uh, and Phase Two is where we're wanting to go next. And so this, with, with Phase Two, that would take us all the way, right now, Phase One's Madison to Spicer. This would take us all the way to Greenback.
Oh, good.
And so, um, it's not, it's not done yet. Um, they're still doing their work, uh, at the federal budget level. But the fact that it's on this community project funding request list, uh, is a real positive sign for the city. So, uh, we'll, uh, keep rooting for it, if you will. So just wanted to share that. We'll probably hear sometime like after October first. That's right, that's right. So that's that timeframe. And, uh, but was very happy to see this on the list, and that could be very meaningful for the city of Citrus Heights. And I know that, um, you know, our team, uh, was, been working very hard on advocating for this project. Really proud of our team on this. And then also, I know our council, uh, regularly advocates for Citrus Heights too, so great to see this. Uh, and some upcoming events. We've got a number of events coming. First Memorial Day. Uh, there's some terrific opportunities to honor those that had paid the ultimate sacrifice and fallen in, in defense of our, our country and, and, uh, our liberties that we celebrate and hold dear here. Uh, the American Legion Post Six Thirty Seven, Citrus Heights Post Six Thirty Seven, and Sylvan Cemetery hosts their annual event at eleven AM. Uh, and then the Veterans Community Center, uh, is holding an event where they have the Ben Ali Shrine Band that will be doing a performance there as well, and that's at twelve PM. Uh, so just after the Sylvan Cemetery event, just down Sylvan Road, is a Veterans Community Center, and that's an open event that's free to the public as well.
Red, white, and blue popsicles.
Red, white, and blue popsicles will be served there also. Uh, so definitely a couple days, uh, or a couple events to, to celebrate, uh, that reverent day. Citrus Heights will, uh, City Hall will also be closed to allow, uh, people to honor Memorial Day. Uh, we also have Citrus Heights Art Beat. Uh, that's gonna be occurring, uh, uh, May thirty-first through June first at Marketplace at Birdcage. We're gonna have, we've been having social media posts, and we'll have additional information out there to, uh, speak to the, the times that all the events are getting started, so, uh, watch for that.
I have June second in my calendar. Is it a?
May thirty-first through June second?
I think it's, Portia, is it second, June second you said, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so May, if, if you're watching, it's May thirty-first through June second. And we will make sure, and we do have the correct information on our social media page. And, and you're gonna continue to see Blast. It's gonna be a lot of fun, a three-day event to celebrate art. And last year, attending that event, it was an excellent event, and I was, uh, really excited about how many great local artists we have here in Citrus Heights. Actually, one of the jewelers had the state award, um, for their work. I mean, it was pretty impressive. So, uh, looking forward to another great event. And, uh, the city council provided, um, a, a grant award to provide, uh, some funding for this to help make it happen. So we're looking forward to working with Citrus Heights Art to have a great event there. Uh, and then on City Scoop, we've got our first City Scoop of the summer that's occurring June sixth at Sylvan Oaks Library from six thirty to eight. Uh, and that's been a very popular series of events, so this is the first of three that we'll be celebrating this summer. The goats have been very popular. Everyone wants to know about what's going on with the goats. So on, uh, May eighth, we had five hundred goats that arrived at Citrus Heights, at Crestmont, uh, in Moss Oak Open Space. They're very hungry. If you've seen any of the videos, they're very excited when they arrive to eat. Um, and they're a terrific way, it's, it's, outside of, uh, some of their friendly sounds they make, uh, it's pretty quiet. And, and people like them, and it avoids a lot of heavy equipment and herbicides. And it's actually pretty cost-effective because to get tractors and, and people with weed eaters, uh, it's a lot easier to do with the goats. Um, and we are actually gonna be moving them this weekend, or, uh, the herder's gonna be moving them this weekend to the vacant lot just north of City Hall. So they'll be right here off Stock Ranch Road.
Oh, cool.
As well. So, uh, if you're.
You could bring a couple over to Sylvan Road. So that little piece of property we own over there?
Yeah, yeah, we've, uh.
Where you mow her.
We, we mowed that one this year, um, but we're gonna have some goats nearby, so it'll, it'll be fantastic. So if you're watching, we'll have some goats near City Hall. And then, uh, one of the things that's gonna be hitting the mailboxes, uh, throughout the community is some save the dates. You know, we just talked about some great events that are gonna be occurring. Uh, but we've got a mailer that is gonna be highlighting, uh, some of our events, including the City Scoop events. Also, the Stars and Stripes, Sunday Fun Day. We're gonna have a Chip In Day that'll be a new event that is part of our cares campaign. Uh, of course, State of the City, uh, our holiday tree lighting. And then, uh, some other events are gonna be listed there as well. On the other side of it, and this is kind of part of the strategic objectives, to further, um, promote our, our neighborhood, uh, area organizations is some neighborhood engagement information. How do you engage with your neighborhood? Uh, so we'll have that on there. You can see there's a QR code and just kind of ways to stay connected in the community. So that's gonna be, um, uh, hitting mailboxes at the end of this month.
Ash, on that Stars and Stripes event, I'm being told that there's a lack of information on starting time on our website and stuff like that. So maybe if we could update that so people know when they can show up. Uh, the time is, for the fireworks is noted somewhere, but actually, when the festivities might.
When's the party start?
When's the party?
Alright, we'll make sure to get that going. We'll make sure to get that going. And we're gonna be pumping that up in a big way here as well. But, uh, we'll definitely get the start time on there.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Uh, and then this is another part of the cares campaign, and this was something that came out of, uh, our strategic objectives that, uh, council supported with the whole cares campaign, uh, for the report, maintain, chip in. But these are signs that are available to our businesses, for them to put out in the parking lots uh, and make sure that's reported, that we, if there's illegal dumping, report it. Uh, and so we, we definitely would like to, um, if a business wants one of these signs, or a metal sign that you can post at your business, uh, in the parking lot, we do have some available. So if you're interested in doing this, uh, please reach out, and, um, we'd be happy to provide one. And then finally, uh, at the May twenty-second, uh, Planning Commission meeting, which occurred just last night, the Planning Commission recommended the city council approve a tentative map in a development agreement for the corner of Sunrise and Greenback, which is almost three acres. And this would really, uh, this is the first project that we've seen processed under the Sunrise Tomorrow Plan. And it basically splits that existing parcel into three parcels. One maintains the existing bank that's there, but just east of there, there's a parcel for a hotel site. And then development agreement, it specifies, uh, the type and brands of hotels that would be acceptable to make sure that it's a, a, a good brand for the city. Uh, and then also a retail restaurant pad that would be just, uh, south of the bank building off Sunrise. So, ex, uh, excited to see this come before the council. Certainly, it's gonna be one that you're gonna be, uh, have a public hearing on in front of you, but just letting the community know that the Planning Commission took this action. It's gonna be something that's coming to the council at a meeting in the future. And that, uh, concludes my comments.
Thank you, sir. Next, uh, item, please.
Next item is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
Anything, anything? Go ahead.
I wanna thank you, um, city manager, for sending letters of support for the various bills that are wending, winding their way through the legislature on revisions of Prop forty-seven, which is the retail theft, um, provision. But also to the, um, one of the discussion topics we had at our vice mayor lunch was the item that's gonna be on the November ballot that the Community Californians for Safer Communities Coalition collected enough signatures to put an item on the, on the, uh, November ballot. There was a discussion on whether we, as a council, can do a support letter or support, and I'm not even sure where you send it, or how you support this, this thing. So, um, I'm hoping to find out more information, and if I do, I'm thinking that maybe we could have a, an agenda item in the future on it.
You're like a resolution?
Like a resolution.
Certainly, the council, if we've got a couple members of the council that would like to see something come back, and basically, are we given overview of what it is?
They may send me a template when their, when their city council does it, so.
I'd like to sec, second that. Okay, great. Well, we'll make, uh, we'll bring it in and do an overview. And, uh, and if you'd like to do a resolution of support after hearing about it, we'll love it, ready to go.
Let her do the work.
There you go. And we'll make it so.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, next item, please.
Uh, there are no further items.
I would like to go ahead and adjourn this meeting, uh, in honor of the, uh, over one billion men and women who have given their life to our country. Thank you.